October 22nd meeting of the Parker Planning Commission to order at 7:00 PM. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? John?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. All right. Are there any additions to or deletions from the agenda?
No, sir, there are not.
Roll call, let's, I believe. Let me just go down the roll, we'll see who's here. Eliana?
Here.
Here.
Rich?
Here.
Eric?
Here.
John?
Here.
Tracy?
Here.
Ruth Ann?
Here.
Wow.
Hey, guys, can you mute your phones?
Yeah, I got it.
Kim?
Here.
Anthony is not. And I am here, so. All regular members are seated. Approval of minutes, do we have any additions to our corrections on the minutes from October 8th?
None.
No, sir.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the October 8th, 2020 Planning Commission minutes.
My second.
It's been moved by John, seconded by Eliana, that we approve the minutes from October 8th, 2020. I'll call the question. Eliana?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Ruth Ann?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
The chair is aye. Next, got a short statement to read as we do before we start. Thank you for attending the Parker Planning Commission meeting. Before the meeting, the core of the meeting begins, I emphasize that if you wish to make public comments on any item in this hearing, you must be joined into the Zoom webinar link posted on the town's website. Facebook Live participants are only able to view and listen to the meeting. Now would be a good time to leave Facebook Live and join the Planning Commission meeting on Zoom if you wish to comment on any agenda item by using the Zoom Raise Your Hand feature. We appreciate your attendance at Planning Commission and your cooperation. We, as sitting members of the Planning Commission, take our role and responsibilities seriously. When we, as the Planning Commission, review site plans, zonings, or other land use requests during a public hearing, the Planning Commission is sitting as a quasi judicial body. For projects that are under review by the town, we are unable by state law to discuss the matters of the project when approached by members of the public outside of a public hearing. This does not mean that we are not engaged or interested in hearing from members of the public, quite the opposite. We encourage and appreciate public participation as part of the public hearing process. The public hearing is where we listen to comments, concerns, technical analysis, and other information provided by town staff, the developer, and the public. This information, combined with the requirements of land development ordinance, state and federal laws, allows the Planning Commission to remain objective, fair, and balanced when making a recommendation or taking action. Simply put, the Planning Commission is required by law to remain impartial to ensure that each project, the developer, town staff, and overall community gets the due process it deserves. Okay, next item on our agenda. The first is a resolution, and it is a resolution to adopt the Town of Parker Three Mile Area Plan. Do we have a presentation on that? Is Karen?
Yes, let me share my screen. Does it look like it's on there?
Not yet.
How about that?
Not yet.
That one? Okay, let's see. Let me see if I can troubleshoot this, I apologize. Okay, is that one showing?
Carolyn, do you have it on a drive, or is it on your laptop?
It's on my desktop.
And are you hitting Share Screen?
Bryce is going to come in to help me. I'm not sure how to use this on.
Share Screen. It right there? You click on it?
Okay, can you see it now?
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and start the presentation. Good evening, Chairman and Planning Commissioners. Tonight I'll be presenting an overview of the 2023 Mile Area Plan update. Sorry, I just need to adjust this for a second here. Okay, the Town's Three Mile Area Plan was developed in 2006 to comply with the State's Municipal Annexation Act of 1965 that ensures municipalities are able to service newly annexed areas. The plan is required to be updated annually. What the plan does is it references planning documents from the Town of Parker and other jurisdictions and complies with state law. What the plan does not do is change the master plan, change planning areas, or change the town's regulations or zoning, nor does it obligate the town to change any of the above. The plan also references planning documents from surrounding counties and communities. This year, there were various changes to Maps 1, 2, 5, and 6. Changes to Map 1 include one Parker annexation, which is the E-470 Right-Away. Map 1 also references annexations from other jurisdictions, one of which includes the City of Centennial's Inova 3 Business Park, which is located east of I-25. Their boundary map was updated to show this annexation. Map 2 includes changes to the transportation facilities located within the three-mile buffer. Changes to Parker include the completion of King's Point Way, St. Row construction, which has started in the Looking Glass subdivision, and construction on the street network continues through Metal Arc, Trails at Crowfoot, and Looking Glass. Changes outside of Parker include the construction on Ridge Gate Parkway and the Canyons Parkway. And the Parker to Lone Tree Transit Mobility Corridor route has been included in the town's master plan and other relevant planning documents since 2014. This year, town staff submitted the Mobility Corridor Route Map to be included in Dr. Cog's 2050 Transportation Master Plan document. Map 5 shows one change this year to the Water and Sanitation District map. This change was the addition of the Trails at Crowfoot Metro Districts 1 through 3, which serves the Hess Ranch Plan developments. Next year, staff will be looking into the possibility of organizing a map that shows Water and Sanitation districts and a new map that shows Metro Districts. Map 6 shows one change this year to the County zoning map. Arapaho County recently completed an update to their land development ordinance and updated the following zoning districts. The residential estate and the residential agricultural districts are now referenced as Rural Residential B, and agricultural zoning district is now referenced as the Rural Residential Ag. Staff recommends that Planning Commission recommend that Town Council adopt the 2023 Mile Area Plan update through Resolution Number 20-054. Are there any questions?
Questions for Carolyn? I'll go down the list here. Eliana?
None for me, this seems pretty cut and dry.
Okay, Rich?
Thank you, Carolyn.
None for me.
Eric?
None.
John?
None.
Ruth Ann?
None.
Kim?
None.
And none from the chair. Rosemary or Bryce? Are you there? Hello? Rosemary?
Yes, Gary.
Or Bryce? This isn't a public hearing, it's a resolution, so do we do it like a public hearing?
Yeah, so we'll still take any public comment. It's a public meeting, and we still, yeah.
Okay, it just wasn't clear when I was looking at it that kind of what the process should be. Okay, so since there's no questions and we want to be available to the public, we will open this discussion to public comment. Please use the Raise Your Hand feature on the Zoom meeting. Any hands showing, Rosemary?
No chair, no hands.
Okay, then we will close the public comment. Do Commissioners need any further information from Carolyn?
No.
Okay, sounds like not, okay. We then will, I guess, we never even opened a public hearing, so a public meeting or whatever, but we'll close the public meeting at 7:12. Planning Commissioner discussion.
No, this seems pretty cut and dry, I don't, nothing further to ask.
Okay, Rich?
No, I have no issues with the updates.
No, Eric?
Yeah, I'm supportive of the updates, I have nothing to add.
John?
I agree with my fellow Commissioners and will support.
Ruth Ann?
This complies with the law and in support.
Kim?
Everything looks good, I will be in support.
I agree with my fellow Commissioners, it's, appreciate Carolyn's work on that. Do we have a motion?
I move the Planning Commission recommend Town Council adopt the Town of Parker's 2023 Mile Area Plan.
My second.
It's been moved by John, seconded by Rich. The Planning Commission recommend Town Council adopt the Town of Parker's 2023 Mile Area Plan, and I will call the question. Eliana?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Ruth Ann?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Chair is aye, passes unanimously. All right, next item on our agenda.
So let me share my screen again, I have another presentation. Let's see.
I need to open the hearing first, though, Carolyn.
Okay, sorry, let me stop.
All right, we will, we have a public hearing on the McLaughlin property filing 1, Lot 1, used by special review for 9855 Parker LLC Inspire Animal Hospital, and we will open the public hearing at 7:13. We're all yours, Carolyn. There we go, looks great.
Awesome, let me get this going here. Okay, is that showing good?
Yep.
Alrighty, so this presentation is for the McLaughlin filing number 1, Lot 1, used by special review, case number Z20-009. This used by special review has met all public notice requirements. The applicants present here tonight via Zoom are Ben Swanson, John Witt, Chad Hill, Chris Gebhardt, Josh Saunders, and Jamie Salomon. They'll be available to answer any questions. This is a request to operate a veterinary hospital in an existing commercial building. The subject property, which is shown in red, is located on the north side of Lincoln Avenue, between Durant's Belt and Parker Road, and the old Payless Shoe Store location. Surrounding uses include the Murdochs Retail Building to the north, TSG Automotive to the east, Walgreens, and unincorporated Douglas County Parcel to the south, and the Crossroads Church is located to the west. The existing commercial building is located at 9855 South Parker Road and consists of approximately 3,700 square feet with existing landscaping and a storefront entrance. The property was originally constructed in 1995, and the Payless Shoe Source has been the original tenant. Payless vacated the property in June of 2019 following corporate bankruptcy, and the building has been vacant since this time. The applicant, 9855 Parker LLC Inspire Animal Hospital, is requesting a used by special review to allow for 100% use of the building to be used for the veterinary hospital. It'll have an outdoor fenced area located on the rear of the building. The site is located within the modified commercial zoning district, and veterinary hospital uses are listed as a used by special review as it relates to the permitted uses within the modified commercial zoning district. Inspire Veterinary Hospital specializes in treating smaller sized animals. The hours of operation for the use will be Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and Saturday and Sunday from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. The applicant will submit a site plan to convert the existing building into the proposed vet hospital. The interior space will be remodeled, and the applicant will add an outdoor fence as an outdoor play area for the animals. This fenced area will have opaque fencing material with artificial turf grass. In addition, the applicant will add a new trash enclosure to the rear of the building to be located out of sight from Lincoln Avenue. The applicant will also add a new sidewalk along the south end of the building, leading from the parking lot to the rear of the building. Additional screening landscaping will be added to screen the backup house from Lincoln Avenue. This will include additional street trees and shrubs. Overall, these changes will enhance Lincoln Avenue frontage in this area. There are nine criteria used to evaluate a used by special review request. A detailed analysis of the nine criteria is located in the staff report. For this presentation, staff has chosen to highlight three criteria as they are the most relevant to the request. So for criteria number one, the veterinary hospital is expanding into an existing tenant space within the building. Their surrounding businesses are all commercial. Staff finds that the proposed use is in harmony and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas. Staff finds that criteria number one has been met. For criteria number eight, the property is currently surrounded by existing commercial and includes parking and a loading zone. Dead and missing landscaping will be replaced to align with the original approved landscape plan, and additional street trees will be added along Lincoln Avenue. The proposed use will take place within an existing building, and the proposed outdoor use will be screened by an opaque fence. The applicant's proposal does not negatively impact the existing landscaping, so staff finds that criteria number eight has been met. Lastly, the criteria number nine, the impacts created by the veterinary hospital will be minimal. The applicant's bring over 25 years of veterinary experience and are very familiar with a variety of animal species. All employees will have regular safety training to ensure that proper handling of animal patients. Staff will monitor the outdoor area to ensure that there's never any waste on any of the grounds. The applicant will work to ensure pet health and welfare so as not to be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of current and future residents of the town. Staff finds that criteria number nine is met. Staff has determined that this request satisfies the nine criteria for used by special review, and all public notice requirements have been met. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend that Town Council approve the McLaughlin filing number 1, Lot 1, used by special review, subject to the eight conditions contained within the staff report. Like to open this up for questions, and I'm going to unshare my screen. That concludes this presentation.
Carolyn, a quick question.
Yeah.
Sorry, Gary.
Okay, go ahead, Eliana.
Has there been any concern expressed about potentially the noise?
No, we have not received any public comments on noise, and the applicants have prepared to mitigate any noise from barking dogs. They won't be permitting dogs to be alone in the outdoor play areas. They're also certified in what they call fear free practice, and I'll let the applicants talk to this, but this actually is a practice that decreases barking. And the inside of the building will have new walls to be installed that will have an STC-55, which is an excellent sound rating type of material. So they will be mitigating noise from barking dogs and other animals.
I appreciate that.
Rich?
Yes, Carolyn, or Bryce, if you know, the Payless Building and the Murdochs, is that a common wall, or is there two separate walls, one for each building?
So there is a common wall, and if Ben Swanson is the owner of the building, if he's unmuted, would you like to go ahead and answer that question?
Yeah, definitely. This is Ben, but the wall between Murdochs next door and this building is a block, is a concrete block wall, because this building was built after the fact, so no sound will actually transmit from the vet clinic to Murdochs. And then the only application for the STC-55 wall would be if there was a demising wall built within the space, but other than that, except for the storefront and the perimeter of the building being concrete block, it's pretty soundproof.
Okay, so that is the question. So there is only one wall between the two businesses?
That's correct.
Could I jump in? This is John.
Okay.
There's actually two block walls. There's one, there are two separate buildings, if you look at them really close, there's a filler piece, the filler strip, that shows that there's a separation between the two buildings, so there's actually two separate block walls for each building. And you can also see that on the roof.
Okay, but then in the hospital part, there will be soundproofing put on that side of the wall? Additional soundproofing, right?
Only, only if...
There wouldn't be any, well, it's two different things. So the wall itself, the concrete wall, doesn't need any soundproofing, because there can't be any noise that transmits through there from the vet, but if there was ever a demising wall within the space, then that would be soundproof, so that there was an adjacent tenant within 9855 South Parker, there would be a demising wall that would meet minimum STC-55, probably be built at a higher level to mitigate that sound transmission, but that's only in the event that not this 100% of the building was used for the veterinary use. Otherwise, it's all within the building, so there's not a need on the, I guess, the exterior perimeter walls for any additional soundproofing.
All right, thank you.
Eric, do you want to state what you indicated to me?
Yeah, yeah, I need to disclose, I have a professional relationship with the building owner. I don't know if I'll be able to provide an impartial deliberation here, but I'll let the Planning Commission decide if I should vote or not on this.
Commissioners, usually on this, I mean, I guess we would have a little bit of discussion, but I would suggest, and I'll look to my fellow Commissioners, but I would suggest that we just ask Eric to kind of recuse himself from this aspect of the hearing. Comments, Commissioners?
I think that's fair, Gary, you know, it makes it cleaner and safer and more straightforward for Eric to recuse from the vote.
Is that fair enough, Eric?
That's perfect, I'll turn off my camera and my mic through the deliberation here.
Okay, thanks. All right. John, any questions for Carolyn or the owners?
Yeah, I don't know who will answer this one, but as a veterinary hospital, I assume that you're going to be providing animal, you know, health services, surgery, et cetera. If it is so required that an animal is staying overnight, will the building be staffed with that animal or animals?
Yeah, great question. We actually will just be a general practice, so once the doors close at 6:00 PM, we refer out to emergency hospitals, so there actually won't ever be any animals spending the night.
So you won't be doing any surgical procedures there, you won't be neutering anything like that that could have a complication?
No, we will, absolutely. With our experience, low risks such as neuters, spays, and whatnot, done early in the morning, close recovery monitoring, usually safe to go home the same day.
Okay, and then I have one other brief question. On the cleanup of the outdoor area, I know you'll have somebody out there, will it be cleaned as the pet is out there, or will you have a cleaning regime that you provide once, twice, three times a day?
Of course, valid question. Hospital policy will be every animal individually walked on a leash outside, so they'll never be unimpeded. Immediately, any fecal matter waste is to be picked up immediately and then disposed of into a lid sealed container, so it'll be immediately picked up.
Okay, that's all I have, Gary.
Ruth Ann?
Could you, could one of the applicants explain a little bit more about the certification process that you talked about in your application? There's a special certification you all are going to have?
Of course, so in addition to the basic requirements, we are proud that we've taken additional steps in what's called fear free certification. It's a very, very extensive process, testing you have to take, continuing education, it just decreases stress on all the patients, which for those triggers that will bring down those stress and triggers, so it generally provides a much safer experience for all employees, all owners, but it really lessens the stress, therefore decreases any barking and contributes to that. So it's an additional certification above and beyond the minimums.
Okay. Ruth Ann?
Yeah, the other question I had was for Carolyn real quick.
Yes.
This, we had, we've had applications come and go for the property across the other south side of Lincoln. Is there any reason to think that this used by special review permission would impact in any way the ability for us to do the kinds of development we foresee on the south side of Lincoln?
So are you referring to the vacant property that's currently unincorporated Douglas County?
Right, but we, there had been some stuff that had come through in the past, so just wondering how that was going to affect.
So we, staff doesn't anticipate that there would be any effect on any of those, any future land uses that would come in there. It would most likely be zoned a commercial use, so the whole area surrounding land uses from this particular site are zoned commercial, or would fall within that modified commercial zone, and then it's all within the master plans, they call it the central commercial core. So it's all consistent and aligns with the master plan.
Thank you.
Kim?
Sorry about that. I, I don't have any questions. I guess my only comment is I don't foresee that any of this development would impact anything at that corner. It's a pretty busy corner. My guess is you're not even going to notice that building, so unless there were other comments from outside agencies that we need to know about, I think I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I didn't receive any, anything that, I mean, as far as outside agency referrals, most of them approved the use, and we'll be taking this to site, you know, it'll go to the site plan process after the use is approved. So at this point, we, we really didn't receive any outstanding referral agency comments that would affect approving this use.
Thanks, Carolyn. All right, as this is a public hearing, we will open the discussion to public comment. Please use the raise your hand feature on the Zoom meeting, and now would be the time, if you had a question with, about this particular, or a comment on this particular item, to Do we have any questions, Rosemary?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, we will close the public comment. Commissioners, do you need anything else from Carolyn or the applicants?
I have one more question.
Rich?
Along with the medical care for the, for the pets, is there going to be any daycare provided for any, or is it just plain medical, medical care for the pets?
Richard, hi, this is Jamie. It will just be medical care. There's not going to be like a doggy daycare.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners?
None.
No, sir.
Okay, we will close the public hearing at seven thirty-one. Planning Commissioner discussion, start with Eliana.
I'm going to agree with the comment made that I've seen no overall negative impact. I think it's a positive impact. I think it's a great location for it. I also do believe that it is a much-needed, much-needed entity, especially in that area, so I'm going to agree with and hope that all conditions have been met, and I'm going to vote in favor of it.
Rich?
Okay, I don't believe that the veterinary hospital will have any adverse effect on the area, and I believe that most all the nine criteria have been met as long as the eight recommended conditions are met. I'll be for it.
John?
Yeah, I'm, I'm very much for it. I think it will, two things. It will fill up a space that has been vacant for over a year with a complementary business to Murdoch, so it may help to enhance Murdoch or vice versa. Murdoch may help to enhance them because of the type of consumers that are in both facilities, and so I'm going to be very much in favor of it.
Ruth Ann?
I agree with my fellow commissioners and have nothing else to add.
Kim?
I agree. I think it's a great spot for it, and I think it, I agree with John, it may enhance Murdoch's business and vice versa.
I have nothing to add. I'm in full support of it. It looks like a good plan. Do we have a motion?
I move the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the McLennick Glen filing one, Lot One, used by special review request for a veterinary hospital to allow up to one hundred percent of the building to be used for a veterinary hospital facility with up to thirty-seven hundred square feet of indoor space and four hundred square feet of an outdoor fenced area located in the rear of the building, subject to the eight conditions contained in staff's report.
We have a second. Rich?
A second.
Rich, second. It's been moved by John, seconded by Rich. The Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the McLaughlin filing one, Lot One, used by special review, request for a veterinary hospital to allow up to one hundred percent of the building to be used for veterinary hospital facility with up to thirty-seven hundred square feet of indoor space and four hundred square feet of an outdoor fenced area located in the rear of the building, subject to the eight conditions contained in staff's report. I will call the question. Eliana?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Ruth Ann?
Hi.
Kim?
Hi.
And the chair's eye. It passes six zero. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we text Eric and get him back? Or how would we do that?
Or he's still on?
I'm still here.
Oh, you're still, okay, cool.
He's just a, he's just a blank statement at the moment.
Ouch!
Shoot.
Oh, my life.
All right, next item, seven B. Douglas, two thirty-four, filing six, minor development plat. It is to be continued. Do we have a motion to do so?
I move, I move planning, the Planning Commission continue the Douglas, two thirty-four, filing six, minor development plat to October twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty.
A second.
It's been moved by John, seconded by Eliana, that Planning Commission continue the Douglas, two thirty-four, filing six, minor development plat to October twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty, and I will call that question. Eliana?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Ruth Ann?
Hi.
Kim?
Hi.
And chair is eye. Is there anything else for the group?
Chair, did you call Eric?
I did.
Yes.
I didn't hear him.
Anything else from staff? Bryce? Rosemary?
Just a reminder that there's a meeting next Thursday, October twenty-ninth. There won't be any training associated with that. There'll be training in advance at the November twelfth meeting.
Okay. All right, well, and with that, we will adjourn the Planning Commission meeting at seven thirty-six. Have a good weekend.